Last week.
Turn my phone to stop.
Someday.
You and me both.
And he be offered another job tonight, is that what you said?
Glasses, I don't know.
Could be. We're good?
Yep, we're good.
Right, can we call this meeting to order and have everybody stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice.
Okay, roll call. Marian?
Here.
Scott?
I am here.
Brian?
Here.
Dirk?
Here.
Danny?
Here.
Peter?
Here.
And myself, we're here. All in favor? Sorry, can I have a motion?
Motion to accept rule.
I'm gonna, my blood pressure's gonna come down. Um, okay, now all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, may I have a motion in a second to approve the agenda?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes of the previous meeting, may I have a motion in a second to approve the minutes?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Communications. We have the Erie Wembosse nomination calls, the letters from Mary, Dave, Cam and Mark. Um, does anybody have anything else?
Just want to clarify, there's three open spots, correct? Three nominations and three open spots, correct?
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody have anything else?
Oh.
Okay, uh, that brings us to unfinished business. We have none. Dr. Genestry?
Uh, thank you, Mrs. Bataglia. Um, I've got just a couple. I know we've, uh, met a few times in the past month. Uh, so just a couple of updates for the board and our public. Um, just a reminder, I left our slides in there for the Smart School Investment Plan that Mr. Feldman presented uh, to the board last week. Um, if approved tonight, the public comment period starts for the next thirty days. Uh, and then, um, we can submit our, uh, plan plus any comments to state ed uh, to try and get the money, uh, flowing. The Smart Schools Bond Act was passed probably seven years ago, eight years ago. Uh, that provided two billion dollars in, um, invest in technology upgrades to schools. You can use your Smart Schools money for, uh, security upgrades and we're trying to access that money uh, to make, um, uh, uh, door projects in the high school and the middle school that would put internal swipe cards, um, on doors. So, um, we really believe that this will be a a nice, safe way, um, for our, uh, teachers to enter and, um, and our students as well. And at the same time, um, you know, we're going to eliminate key, a key system uh, at the high school and the middle school. So, um, we're excited about this plan. Um, you know, we hope it moves forward tonight. Um, and if so, it will open the thirty day comment period. Um, in total, we're looking at, um, the Harding Project of five hundred and fifty-one thousand um, at the high school and or middle school. Um, and we believe we have enough money to cover, uh, definitely the high school and most of the middle school. Um, also on Saturday, uh, the board was presented with the first round of the budget, of the rollover budget. Um, and I wanted to include this slide in my presentation tonight. Um, February eighth, the board met, um, to discuss the program maintenance budget. The next board budget, uh, study session will be on March eleventh, followed by one on April eighth. Um, and then the budget hearing will be April twenty-second, followed by the annual budget vote and school board election on May twentieth, um, where we are starting to plan a lot of events for May twentieth to showcase the great work of our students and, uh, while our voters are, um, at the ballot box. So, um, excited for the budget season, uh, to be here. Um, we're getting updates kind of constantly from state ed and, uh, um, the governor's office on where we are with our revenues. Um, and we're doing a lot of work um, to make sure the, um, first projected run is accurate. Um, also on the agenda tonight is, uh, I know we've talked about it quite a bit. Our, uh, proposed start and stop times for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, um, developed uh, by the Building Use Committee. Um, and, uh, really, over the past year and a half, knowing that we had um, fifteen more minutes of instructional time, uh, that we were going to add to every, uh, uh, building in the district. Uh, we knew we had to change the start and stop times anyway. And we really feel like we came up with a plan, um, that, um, opens up opportunities for middle school students after school. Um, has limited interruption or disruption to the elementary, um, schools. Um, and, um, incorporates that extra fifteen minutes of instruction. So, um, I've received one more email today. Um, in the past two weeks, I've received two more emails. Uh, and so, um, we believe, you know, our, our community's had a lot of time to comment on this. Um, and I've answered, uh, every email that has, that has come in. So, um, so we're excited to hopefully move this forward tonight. Um, and then the big work goes on with Mr. Kennedy at the, uh, the Transportation Department to start, um, start routing and so on and so forth. So. Um, and then an update on the Sweet Home Panther. Uh, we have had over three hundred submissions from our students across K through twelve. Uh, the buildings, a small sampling is up there. Um, Ms. Legel put these out on social media today, but we have a small sampling of some of the work that our students have done uh, to really start to, um, put the Panther together. We're super excited that we had three hundred entries, um, from all buildings across the district. Uh, this week, the, the buildings are going to narrow it down to the final ten. And then, uh, we will work with a professional graphic artist to render them so they are logo worthy. Um, and we're, again, just excited that this was a completely, you know, student-led, um, activity. And, um, a lot of, a lot of kids rallied around, um, getting this done and, and trying to be part of this uh, awesome project. Um, the winner, again, uh, will receive a five hundred dollar scholarship from Dollars for Scholars um, that they will have access to in their senior year, uh, here at Sweet Home. So, uh, we will narrow it down, hopefully by the end of this week, to ten finalists. The graphic artists will get to work with the, with our students to put them, um, put the renderings together and then we will get ready to present them to our public for a vote on May twentieth to pick the official Panther. Uh, and then I just, I, I got to see Frozen on Friday night and I hope, um, two sold-out shows, so I know a lot of our, uh, community got to see it as well. Uh, just an incredible job, um, from the middle school, uh, from start to finish. It was just, just so well done. Um, the production, the lighting, the costumes, the acting, the singing. Uh, I can't say enough good things. I was with my, my younger one. Uh, he's gonna go to sixth grade next year. Can't wait to be a part of the musical after seeing, um, you know, uh, Frozen and, and just a great job that the kids did. I think one of the most thing, one of the things that I was most impressed with were, were the amount of students that were involved in the production. Um, I heard it was well in the hundred uh, range and, uh, from all of the actors and singers to backstage, uh, just a great job. I want to thank um, our, our teachers that were involved as well. Um, and I don't remember it being sold out last year, so this one sold out twice um, on both Friday and Saturday and just, uh, uh, kudos to everybody involved in, in Frozen. It was just a great time. Um, for everyone who was there.
Is that song still stuck in your head, Mr.?
I was singing it all day Saturday, so yes, yes. Don't ask me to sing it now.
That's what I have tonight. If there's any questions.
Does anybody have any questions for Dr. Genestry?
Thank you.
All right. Okay. Upcoming events, we have multicultural night at Maplemeier coming up.
Yeah, if I could mention that, just if you are able to attend, I know, uh, Mr. Ryan said initially, we didn't have as much interest there. But now it's definitely rising, so it sounds to be a, a really good night, so.
It's tomorrow at six.
Tomorrow at six, from six to seven thirty.
Thank you for bringing that up. I, I know I reported to the board that we were a little nervous about numbers, but um, it's really picked up. They did a, they did a little extra push over at Maplemeier and it's really picked up. So, um, if you can make it, that's, that's an awesome event. Every, every ma, every multicultural night is just a great event.
And then we've got some PTA, PTO, PTSA meetings coming up. All right, and that brings us to.
Winter recess next week?
Oh, winter recess is next week. You're correct.
I forgot that one.
I'm not off, so it doesn't, I don't think. But you're correct. Next week is winter recess. Um, open session, first one per Board Policy fifteen-ten. This open session is for topics related to tonight's agenda. Is anybody interested in speaking? Please state your name and address and affiliation.
Uh, good evening. Uh, my name's Josh Corman. I reside on East Maplemeier Road. Um, I want to speak tonight regarding the plan to put sixth graders and twelfth graders on the same buses. Um, first, I want to acknowledge the hard work that you all do and what I know can sometimes be difficult and thankless jobs. I appreciate your efforts to make Sweet Home the great school district that it is. My child is a sixth grader. I'm very worried about the prospect of her being bussed with older students, including eleventh and twelfth graders, some of whom may be adults. There are significant potential safety issues related to older students bullying the much younger students. There are potentially even scarier safety issues related to twelfth graders, uh, or older students befriending the younger students, trading contact information and where that could lead. The earlier drop-off times only compound these issues because they result in more time the kids could potentially be unsupervised after all being dropped off the bus together. I know there are budget concerns. I know this is inconvenient, but your most important job is to protect the children's safety. If I'm wrong, maybe you could have saved more money. But if you approve this plan and a kid gets hurt, you could have prevented that tonight. Please don't put sixth graders on the same buses as twelfth graders. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, moving on. Um, so new ba, new business.
Hey, I have a motion in a second to approve consent agenda A through K.
So moved.
Are we pulling out?
Nope, not yet.
That's in the second half, second.
Yep. Second group.
Pull out the, uh, vote on the buses here?
Oh.
That would be I, I guess.
I, letter I.
Okay.
And that separately, please?
Sure. Can I have a motion in a second for items A through H, J and K?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
May I have a motion in a second for approval of item I?
So moved.
On the question, like to
Second.
Make a few comments, okay?
Yeah, once is a second.
Add a little more information because I was not here last week. And actually, I would like to ask Maisha if she had any thoughts or interest in saying what she thinks students think about these new changes, if you don't mind.
Um, yeah, sure. Um, okay, to start off, I'd like to say, um, the changes wouldn't affect me, but it would affect my brother at the middle school and my sister who's at Willow Ridge. Um, I think there's not much of a change in the high school or the elementary schools, but, um, it'll definitely make a change to the middle school. I do think it'll be, we will be, well, the middle schoolers will obviously be losing sleep, but I think that it'd be a great way to boost extracurricular involvement. And, um, yeah, um, I think the main worry does shift towards, um, the mixed busing. And, um, one question I have, um, from what I've known, talking to parents and teachers from, and students from the high school, is that in the high school, um, many students are unable to participate in the after-school clubs because of the lack of after-school busing we have because we need to wait on the middle schoolers to finish and get a bus after four. So would that change for the high schoolers or?
Absolutely. Go ahead, Mr. Feldman.
Uh, yeah, Maisha, we do believe that that will change. Uh, what will allow us to kind of look at that, doing that a little bit, um, more, uh, equitably across the board is by, uh, putting all the elementaries at the same start and stop times, uh, so that we only have, uh, three runs instead of four runs. So to be able to add those types of things, uh, after school is certainly a part of our plan, yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
You at one point were asking about a survey for the change of the gowns. Would you think a survey would be appropriate here to the families that are going to be impacted by this?
Um, I think to the parents, yes, for sure. But I believe that the parents already had opportunities to make any concerns that they had. So I don't know how beneficial that'd be.
Right. Can I ask, or go ahead, Dirk? Yeah, let me just finish up here. I, again, this is, in my opinion, a pretty far-reaching impact on our district, the, I got thirty-eight hundreds roughly students and their families. And I, um, think that the board should be in a hundred percent agreement with moving forward with this because I think it's that big of an issue. Uh, not to take away from what the, um, Buildings Use Committee has done and studied and spent hours looking at. But at the end of the day, the issue is not, it's nothing more than finding bus drivers. That's the problem. That's not going to go away here. So what are we gonna do next year or the year after? Are we gonna cut more routes and make more kids walk instead of a quarter mile, a half a mile, a mile to school? I tell you, I can't personally support having students walk, especially with the fleet of buses we have. And I think the issue has to be addressed with how are we going to find the bus drivers? Whether we have to hire them from a contracted bus company or not, I think that's the issue and I think that's what the focus needs to be. And so I also heard that there's some legislation out there that talks about start times, eight and eight-thirty, depending on the grade level. I don't know where that is or why they're talking about it, but that goes back to I, what I think Brian Lible talked about last week or the week before. And that there is some, some science behind getting enough sleep, okay? And, yeah, just go to bed earlier isn't the answer, apparently. Um, I also have heard, and I talked to my Heritage Heights PTA last night. I just said, you know, we have a big decision to make that impacts a lot of folks. What do you think about this? Two parents worried about putting their, they referred to their daughters as peanuts on the middle school bus and what that means and this new, uh, rendition of bus times. Also, the cost of daycare before and after now, you gotta worry about. And jobs, how do we get to our job and get our kids on the bus if we don't have a spouse to support? So my point to them is, would it make sense to survey a broader group of people that this impacts rather than the, you know, hopefully somebody calls in and or comes to a meeting, which we don't get a lot of attention at our board meetings. I don't know why people are busy, times are difficult and maybe not, uh, have as much, uh, paying enough attention to what's going on here. So I would certainly like to get a better sense of the broader community, a survey uh, of what the community believes. So I'd like to just add that to the record. Brian, you had something?
Yeah, you know, everybody knows I've spoken on this in the past. I, I was wondering, Maisha, um, we had a little bit of discussion on this and, um, it's my understanding that you, uh, that there hasn't been, students haven't been asked about this at the, like, the student body level or in terms of, uh, formal, the committee being the committee reaching out to students in a formal way. I'm not talking about teachers asking or superintendent or assistant superintendent. I'm saying the committee itself that made the recommendation. Is that accurate, would you say? Or how do you feel? Or like, what are your thoughts on that? I just want to make sure I understand.
Um, I'm not too sure if there's students that are on the Building Use Committee or not.
But, but you weren't asked by the committee?
Yeah, I wasn't directly asked and like.
And you're not aware of other students being asked?
Yeah.
Okay. Cause that's one, one of the concerns that I was thinking about with this is we talk about DEI. We have a website dedicated to student voice. We talk about student voice being important. And then a decision that involves every single student, where the high school students, you know, it, it just is like, seems like it's, it's disappointing to me that we wouldn't have reached out to the student body. They're the ones putting their brothers and sisters, taking them on the bus, on and off the bus if they're need to. They're the ones who are going to the extracurricular activities. They're the ones who have the jobs get to. They're the ones who may have to drive or not drive now. Um, you know, it's just, how are we? How can we say we're for student voice? How can we say we have act, I believe was just, um, put together, right? The Alliance for Cultural Transformation, is that correct? Or is that the group that the student voice, um, I think there was, we had mentioned that in, in the past, right?
That is the student group.
Yes, and I don't, to my knowledge, I haven't heard at all that that student group was reached. I mean, so that's one of the concerns where for me, I'm not necessarily saying this is the war, they, this decision shouldn't at some point be passed. What I'm saying is, the feedback I've gotten is more related to some of the pieces of the process. And so like, putting this off a month and, you know, asking the high school students so they feel like they have a voice. They, see, the problem is, is what precedent are we setting? You know, we're saying that there, here is a decision that affects every single family, every single student, and we can't just say, let's give it another month so we can get some feedback from all the families. Let's give it another month so we can get feedback from the student body. Um, another piece related to that is, I understand we have gotten a lot of feedback. What have we done with the feedback? What, what's changed? Nothing. So the parents are feeling like, well, I'm, they, I've gotten comments, text messages and going to the PTSA meetings that I've had, which were, what's the point? They've already made their decision. So if there, the final times came out, it was like, the, the, my understanding is the committee met and they were finishing up around four o'clock or, and later in the afternoon, and that's when the final times were determined. Not weeks ago, not months ago. That's when the families and the students finally knew what the actual times were. So it was about a month ago. We've had feedback, but, you know, and if you look at most education law, there's a process where there's a comment period, then it goes back to committee to consider those comments and maybe make tweaks. And I'll give you just one last example here is the twenty-five mile radius. My understanding is that's a radius? Is that, is it a twenty-five mile radius? What, or point, quarter mile radius, right? So I've had a parent reach out to me and then I looked at this myself. Point-two-five radius may mean point-seven or point-eight walking distance. Because if my house is point-seven miles walking, but it's exactly point-two-five miles from the school. So that's, I don't know if all of you are aware of that or knew that because when you're walking, you're, you're walking, you know, like, you might be on the other side of a fence, so you have to walk all the way up, all the way over, back down. So you may only be a quarter of a mile away, but actually walking there. And I've had, had a parent show me on Google Maps. So getting back to the idea of having a feedback process where yes, I think that's meaningful feedback where then we could say, or it goes back to the committee and they could say, you know what, that's really important. That's useful information. For the first time ever, we're going to have walkers. Some of them are going to now not go a quarter of a mile. It sounds like maybe it's a half, maybe it's point-seven. Um, why wouldn't we get that feedback back to the committee? They can then make an adjustment and say, you know, that really wasn't our intent. And the intent is if somebody is outside of the point, the quarter mile, and they can demonstrate through Google Maps or whatever, that it's actually a longer walking distance, that, hey, we're gonna give you, we're gonna pick you up, you know? So there, there are just some pieces here that I think, from a public's perspective, that I think we can do a better job of it as a board. Again, next month, I may vote for this. But tonight I wouldn't because I think we just need to give the public the opportunity to feel that they've been, that their feedback has been, been reflected in the, um, thinking behind it. Even if the, even if the recommendation came back exactly the same, the problem is people and the students, many of them are feeling like they don't have a voice that is really going to be impactful. And particularly the students. I mean, we have a website that talks about student voice. We've talked about student voice. And here, it's like, you know, you make a decision for your kids and we know, we've read, you read the books, you hear about how important it is to talk to your kids and hear from them. And we haven't even asked them, it sounds like. I mean, Maisha represents the, the student body. This is the first time I feel that, I think we've asked you about this. I, I don't, do you recall being asked about it anytime before?
Um, I was asked about my opinions informally by Dr. Wilson, but other than that, not really.
Not really? So, you know, that's where I, I think, you know, it would go a long way of just, you know, of the deferral of, you know, putting it off so that it doesn't cause any, you know, frustration from the public or the student body. And maybe then in that, from that perspective, just, you know, the committee then can meet in between and just reconfirm the decision stays or they want to make an adjustment to that point-two-five, so it, it doesn't include families who are gonna have to walk a little bit longer, maybe to point-seven. Cause think about it, this is the first time I think we're gonna go to walkers, ever. You know, why not, why, why couldn't we give this another month to think, to think through some of those pieces? Or at least the committee to reconsider that piece?
Yeah, I, I'm just gonna say that I, I love the idea of a survey about anything, really, because I think it's really important that people are able to weigh in on things. And I said this to somebody the other day, I don't remember who it was that I was talking to, but I'm willing to put money on the fact that there are parents that don't even know this is happening right now. For whatever reason, you know, they're not reading any of the publications that have come out, or they're not reading the emails, or they haven't looked at the Sweet Home source that got sent home. Whatever the reason is, there are people out there that I know are not aware of what's happening. And it's gonna sneak up on them when they get, they don't get a postcard in the mail from bus routing to say, hey, this is when we're picking your kid up. Or they get that postcard and it's a very different time, and then all of a sudden they're in panic mode. So I love the idea of a survey, if for nothing else than for awareness, that this is something that is on the table right now. And also, and I said this to Dr. Genestry last week, that we looked at that pie chart, right? Those issues that, that he had logged in, in his pie chart that parents had come through, you know, the email and had given feedback. That if for nothing else, we can identify what the discomforts are for the families in the district and we can provide support as a district. We can help parents feel better about kids walking to school. We can help provide supports for parents that are inside out about putting their kid on a bus with older students. We can explain to families what the safety protocols and procedures and personnel are going to be to address what they're concerned about. So I love the idea of a survey just for that reason. But I'm not sure what the lift is like on the part of the district to actually do that.
I have some thoughts about a survey too, and I, I understand why people are asking for one. I think we'd be hard for us to actually be able to find the issue in a survey so that somebody could actually give you a legitimate, a legitimate answer in here. There is so much that's gone into this. I mean, the Building Use Committee's been studying for a long time. We've had, we're probably up until three and a half, four hours of the discussion here, trying to kick around the ideas. And, and, you know, plus our time that we've spent outside of here. I think your survey would be more like a book, you know, and whether or not people would read everything that would need to be there for them to be able to, you know, make an appropriate vote, comment, whatever they might have to do. I'm not sure we could do that, in my opinion.
I think you could probably do it in ten good psychometrically balanced questions. I was like noodling over this the other day and I think it would give us some feedback. At least just to help people feel a little bit better about this.
Do you think that the survey would reach more people than the ten thousand emails we've already sent?
I don't know. Um, I honestly don't know the answer to that. And I, I know that ten thousand, it's not literally ten thousand emails that he sent there individually typing, but it's ten thousand families that we have sent communication to that have not, for whatever reason.
But there's probably. But there's probably 75 that have been gotten, that have gotten individual emails.
Right.
There's been multiple articles in the Amherst Bee. The Sweet Home Source had it. And, and I'm just curious if you think that a survey would reach more people than all of those other communications?
It's a possibility. I mean, I honestly.
It's also been on social media.
I don't know, has it been on social media? Because I don't remember seeing that. But it might be, I don't know.
Well, the Amherst Bee.
Like one of the social media.
The Amherst Bee, by the way, said point two five or point five, and that was published last week. So again.
I only put that in there only because that's, you, you asked for that, and, but I'm recommending point two five.
Yeah, no, I, I mean.
You wanted us to explore what point five would be?
That was up on the original proposal, I thought. That was up on.
No, it wasn't, it was a point two five, but you said, why don't you look at point five? So that's why, but I said last week that I would recommend point two five.
So, you know, I, I just want to make sure that the public is where it's point two five, not.
It is, point two five.
Point five, because that's what was in there, you know?
So the risk of delaying is, in, I think, Mary Ann's words, may, may not give us enough time to prepare the public.
I have heard from comments from parents that they want us to make a decision so that they can move on and get some concrete, start preparing for childcare, start preparing for childcare and getting all their ducks in order. By voting tonight, which I'm in favor of voting tonight and not putting it off, I think we can at least tell parents, look, this is a decision, we're going to support you any way we can and get information out there. But we have put so much information out there to say that we're not communicating with people, I think that's unfair, because I think we've put so much. Dr. Janestry has put out every avenue we can think of. I think doing a survey is just going to bundle things up. We need to make a decision so parents can move on. And I've got some other thoughts here, I just want to say real quick. Regardless of how everybody votes, we know there's no clear cut answer that everybody's going to be okay with. I mean, there's give and takes everywhere, we've talked to that. But at the center, I think of each one of our decisions, whatever we vote or however we decide, I think all of us have the best interest for kids at heart. I mean, that's the reason we're doing this job, so that we can take care of kids. We don't all have to agree, I disagree that we all have to agree with this. I think what builds a good board is that we've talked about it. We may not all agree, but then after the decision is made, we support that decision as a board, seven to nothing. We must support once the decision is made. Let me finish. I have support in the Building and Use Committee. I think they've worked on this for months. We've known this is out there for a long time. They've hashed it out, they've had representation from all the different groups. I want to make it clear too, we appreciate the emails that we receive and all the comments. We have read every single one of those. And it's not like we read it and say, forget it. We, we've taken it to heart and read every single one of those. And some of the emails are just addressed to one of us, and we forward those so that everybody on the board has them. So we've gone through all of those. Just because we might not agree with what you're saying, does it mean we're not listening to you? What else?
So.
Wait, no, let me finish, let me finish. One of the things I would appreciate as we move forward, please be mindful of the cost of childcare to families. I think we have heard that from families. Let's do what we can to support families in this, because I know it's an added expense. But let's see what we can do to really mitigate that increased cost. I know you said that every single bus is going to have an aide on it to watch the kids. I would like us all to have how the referrals are looking. If there's problems on the bus, I want you to really keep track and let us know what's going on on those buses, so we have some hard facts and can say, this is what's going on.
And I, and I wrote back to parents that the, the Building Use Committee will review their emails. And if there's concerns, we're going to constantly look at the data. And so we'll do that through the committee, but then to the board as well.
Okay, thank you. Just so parents know, we are keeping an eye on it. And the last thing, because we did make somewhat of a commitment to families, that we would be increasing our after-school activities. Let's keep to that, so that parents know there's a reason we're doing this.
We, we believe that the proposal will allow for more after-school busing, which is, right now, we're in an equitable situation. So we're, we're excited about that possibility, for sure.
And lastly, I think the mental health of our kids is important. I've, I've listened to the sleep, I've listened to the back and forth. But I think kids participating in all these different activities build a bond, not only with the school atmosphere and the culture, but with some trusted adults that I think we need. So that's the reason I will be voting to go ahead with this tonight.
So all the information we got back via email or whatever in public here, it still says they're the greater percentage against this. You understand that, right?
How many people have, we've heard from six, 70 people. I mean, if you go back and look at Heritage, because I know the three of us were here for Heritage, this entire room. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you were on the other side. This entire room was filled and we were adding chairs. So if the public wants to come out or reach us, they know how. When we had the Heritage issue, where we were debating whether to do back and forth.
Same with COVID.
And the same with COVID, the same with the sports. There's some, the hats, big ticket items like the hats, when things.
School lunch.
Lunch, we hear from families, they know how to get a hold of us. So when I look, I've heard all these people, I've read their emails, but I can't say it's an overwhelm, like, I get it, for some people, it's going to be tough, and we're going to have to find ways to support them.
Okay, so let's go back to, we represent the community.
Correct.
Our feelings.
The best interests also of the community.
We think the public wants. The public, in my eye, does not want this at this time. I think a delay of one month is not going to interrupt plans for next September. I think that's outrageous.
We heard over the weekend that some of what we're proposing in the budget is a domino effect on our contracts out. We, we all heard that. So I think the sooner we get this taken care of, that we've talked about for months.
I think we have enough in the budget and reserves to pick up any slack that we may have to spend on additional contracting of, an extra bus for after-school. And I still, at the end of this, we have not solved the problem. The problem is bus drivers.
But that's not just us, we can't pull.
Your term is up at the end of the year.
Outrageous, you can't.
Where are we going to get bus drivers from? We can't.
They're going to apply.
You can't apply because you work for, you're on the board, you can't work for the district. So you can't be a bus driver.
I'm not going to work for the district as a bus driver.
But we can't.
If the district can't hire bus drivers, find someone that can. That's my answer, I'm sorry. It's a simple economics thing. There is a price in the private sector that will draw applications. If we can't afford that, why can't we afford additional bus drivers through the contracted thing? We have the reserve, we have the money. And we're going to ask the public again to vote for another tax increase, year in, year end. To keep what, to keep, what are we doing? We're going to take away, we're going to make kids walk to school? Okay, we're going to disrupt the lives of every single family in this district. So I'm going to make a motion to table. I need a second.
Second.
She's not debatable, you call the question.
Sorry, what?
A motion to table is not debatable, you just have to call the question.
Call the question. All in favor of tabling this conversation?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Aye.
Opposed, aye.
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 That's four to three, the conversation will not be tabled, we will continue to vote. We have a motion and a second.
So moved.
We have them already?
We are, yeah.
Do we have any more comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Abstain?
I don't even know, right now abstain, I don't.
Okay, we're four to one. The motion carries. That brings us to our next, to our informational items. Maisha, would you like to start?
Yeah, to start off, I'd like to thank the high school's athletic department and administrators. The fitness center is now open to students during ninth period. It's been a success so far. And if it continues to be productive and there's enough interest, we hope to expand it to first period and the lunch periods. Second, in honor of Black History Month, student government will be playing music in the mornings through the PA system to celebrate and recognize black artists for all students to hear. Our diversity and inclusion committee has created 10 large informative posters showcasing powerful black leaders throughout history, and tomorrow, we hope to dedicate either a hallway or a wall to display these to further honor and recognize their impact. Our technology committee has met with and is working closely with the school's technology department to develop a student-run help desk. And this would create a peer-supported system, and students can receive quick assistance about tech-related issues or classwork, and we're currently working on executing that in the safest way possible. The school is hoping to recognize the top 10 students from each grade starting as of next week. Their picture would be taken and hung up to be recognized for their hard work throughout the school year for each quarter. And today, Dr. Lucy and several counselors visited classrooms in the high school to discuss the importance of mental health and bringing awareness to it. And moving forward, we hope to work with her and her team to encourage as many students to sign up and complete online modules to become certified peer advocates. And we aim to make peer support groups where students can gather in circles weekly.
That's it. Thank you. Mary Ann?
Just a few things, I think we mentioned last week, the music festival, which is always a highlight. NHS, the National Honor Society, as always, is a great event. I really like when the parents come up and pin, and now they've added taking pictures. You didn't have, you two didn't have that, but it was taking, the families took pictures. It was, it was just nice to see. Of course, the budget meeting on Saturday. Maple Mayor PTA had their PTA meeting. Talked about some of the events going on, a lot of which we've already talked about. And the last thing, a riveting safety meeting. Some of the things we talked about, emergency drills are completed for the first semester, and they're going to continue, and all should be completed by the end of the year. We are starting the Sandy Hook Promise tip line from Erie One Boses. We are going to be one of the first districts to do this, which I think is great. The tip line is anonymous, and then I was, I didn't want to ask during the meeting, but then what happens from there, Mr. Feldman?
So there's an anonymous tip line that students, you know, we'll go through the process of kind of rolling it out to students, really grades five through grades 12, where they can make, you know, anonymous tips about things that they hear, see, or, or things along those lines. And then based upon where they are located, the school building that they're located, there's a team that the notification goes to, and then they recognize that notification and they follow up.
Okay, and training has started or will be starting soon?
Well, we've built the teams, we've, we've done our initial kickoff meeting earlier this month. We've built the building-based teams, the building-based teams are going through a, a short training now. And then there'll be more kind of an intensive training for the members of those teams going forward. And then we'll announce it and roll it out to kids and families at near spring break.
Okay, so it will be rolled out to the kids pretty soon, and then families also can, okay.
I would really like to thank Mr. Feldman and the team for taking this one on. Like, it's, it's been a heavy lift, but it's a game changer for us.
Worthwhile.
We're one of, I think, seven districts, seven or eight districts in Western New York that are starting with it, so.
Thank you. Katie Bariler, I wrongly pronounced her out, and Anne Noack are doing the crisis response team. Trauma, illness, and grief, they're training staff, as I understand.
Yeah, so they've, they've, they've worked through some workshops where they've built a, a crisis and a trauma response plan to an incident surrounding, you know, potentially safety or other things. So they've put kind of things in place that the safety committee is reviewing. And they would like to see it added to our overall school safety plan for those types of incidences. So again, kudos to Katie Bariler and Anne Noack and their team for working through this and putting this together. They went through some, some training on it and are putting it together for the district, so much appreciated.
Again, our kids will benefit, so thank you.
100% correct.
Water testing for Bud has been completed, it was done by the end of January. Everything's gone to the lab, and now we're waiting for results. But they told us this year, the threshold has changed. It was 15, and now it's point five.
Point one five.
And then point five.
Yeah, and it's a point, there's a, parts per million of things that are, when we test water, the threshold did decrease by two thirds. So we'll get results. We have, once we have results, we have a certain timeframe to address those concerns and remediate issues. But all along the way, we'll post our results. We're required to post our results to our district website. Ms. Lego will help us do that, and we'll communicate with Letters Home. We have to do this once every five years. We did this, this is 2025. We did it towards the, end of the 2019, 2020 school year. And we'll notify parents and post things as we are, and make sure that we're safe in terms of all of our water.
I imagine because we did decrease that threshold, it's going to be a little more challenging than it was in the past.
It will be much more challenging, yes, yes. I would expect to see a lot of issues, just based upon the age of our building, a lot of issues that will need to be remediated.
Okay. And the last thing is rock salt. We can talk rock salt, right? Just as in all of Western New York, I guess there's a shortage of rock salt. So they talk that this week, I think we're supposed to have some ice, we should be okay this week. Next week is a vacation, so, you know, we're trying to piece things together. They're working well with the town of Amherst.
Yes.
To help us out with this, we, I, I'm very thankful for that partnership, that they can help us out a little bit.
So our rock salt is one of the things you never thought you'd talk about when you went to school, about rock salt. Our rock salt is delivered by our supplier to UB. And UB is completely out of rock salt, so this happened about two weeks ago. So we reached out to the town of Amherst, and they were super helpful to allow us to get rock salt in the last storm. And then halfway through that storm, they said, we're out of rock salt. So they stopped us from doing that. So we got notification today, actually, Steve Rosler, our Buildings and Ground Supervisor, said that our supplier has told us that there was 20 tons of rock salt shipped to.
That a lot, I don't know.
It's a tractor trailer full, it's not a lot, in the grand scheme of things.
Sounds like a lot, but it's.
So we, we'll, we'll likely get some to get through this storm, but it seems as though it's going to be a continual battle. But we do have a, a good plan in place. We use rock salt in the parking lots. And we have a plan in place to kind of be mindful of where buses go and things along those lines. But from snow removal, ice removal on sidewalks and walkways leading up to buildings, we have enough bag salt to get us through, hopefully, you know, when it stops snowing in May.
Thank you. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
Tonawanda Fire Department said it takes 250 tons to make one pass through the town.
Correct, it's.
For whatever that's worth.
It's something.
I'm way behind on a lot of the stuff, but I just want to throw one more thing on the safety committee, because I was also there. And I swear you read my notes pretty much. But anyway, the, the last one I got was since the first three of our zero emission buses are arriving, you said in three weeks? Is that, did I remember that?
On or around March 11th?
Right.
Somewhere in there, that timeframe.
We hope.
Scott's counting the days.
And the part, the parts that I caught my attention that I did write down was that you could be doing first responder training on March 6th, and then staff for Scott's staff over there.
Yeah, we're really excited. We've been, again, you remember, we've done this through cooperation with Wendell. And their prime contractor is Fry Electric. They've been in Scott's place the better part of the last two weeks, kind of laying conduit and getting things ready. I got an email today that the chargers are on their way. So if the weather cooperates next week, where we can, we have to do some outside site work with concrete and things along those lines, we should be ready to go with everything being done around the first week of March, which will be in time for our buses to come. But, you know, this is part of the grant processes that we've gone through to get these funds to help with these buses. We are required to do these first responder trainings. And our partners at Matthews Buses have been excellent in that front. They've got an established training already. And we worked today to get, we're going to invite both towns, Tonawanda, Amherst, the police departments, the emergency response teams from both venues, all of the volunteer fire departments across the district, as well as the Erie County Emergency Management Team. So, you know, hopefully we'll get a, a good turnout. And then Scott's crew will, will go through, go through some training on the driver. on the driver front Friday morning, and then mechanics Friday afternoon, so.
If it's possible, I'd like to be able to come in on one of those trainings if you could.
You're more than welcome, more than welcome.
I'm going to put in my Friday memo with all the details. I'll invite the board to attend.
Have you heard anything? I thought, maybe you know something about this. On the news yesterday, they said that they're talking about moving that date where we have to have our buses. Have you heard? I just heard it yesterday.
Moving it.
It depends on who's talking, I think. But that's, there's been talk at the legislature for years. It's just if the governor starts talking about it, then my ears will perk up.
Okay.
I'm going to say, I saw an interview with the governor, and she said, we recognize it's a problem, but that's where she stopped. She didn't say anything else.
Well, you know, I don't mind.
I know, this could be an online discussion too. That's it for me.
Thank you. Ryan?
Yeah, I just, I did attend the middle school, the musical. My daughter was in, in the production crew, and they did a really great job. The whole team, not just the production crew, the staff and the, the students. It was really, really a great job. And I do appreciate also, one is that at the end, and I don't know if they did this at every show because I was at Saturday, but they gave gifts to the, you know, a lot of the teachers and the people who were involved in, you know, making this possible as far as the staff goes. The other piece, I think, that was really nice is they allowed the kids, particularly younger kids, to come up afterwards to take pictures, which was also nice because I have a four-year-old, and she went up. And that's, I think that, again, builds culture and gets those younger kids more and more comfortable with our schools. I attended a P T S A meeting on February 3rd for the middle school. Probably the big thing there is preparing for March Activity Night. I know those activity nights are, the kids enjoy those. So those are, seem to be well-attended and nice event for the students. I also went to the Willow Ridge Sweetheart Dance on January 31st. And what was interesting, I thought, and first of all, that was like really well-attended. The kids had a blast. They had a D J in the gym. But I thought what was funny is like the kids were all in the, you know, this is a bring your parent typically. I mean, you could really, students could bring anybody, but, you know, it was bring your mom, bring your dad. All the kids were in the gym dancing. All the moms and dads were in the gym or in the cafeteria, either talking or on their cell phone. So, you know, the kids, the kids had a lot of fun. The last thing I want to mention is February 4th, I attended the Athletic Committee. And this is one thing I just want to mention in general to the public, I think, about a process of being board members and working and providing feedback. I did get, you know, this isn't pertaining to the Athletic Committee, but athletics. At one of the P T S A meetings, I got some feedback from a parent about uniforms for the track and field and cross-country. And I know we want our kids to, you know, look good and have pride in that. And then I mentioned it to the superintendent, and I appreciate that, that they are, will be getting new and upgraded uniforms. So that's, you know, it's just nice to see you get feedback. And I think what's important in all of these votes and all these discussions that the public knows, even the debates up here, once these things go into place, it's not the end. I think, I know that the district office works hard to accommodate, to work. And, you know, if there's issues, whether it's uniforms or other things, continue to reach out to us, and, you know, we can bring it up. And if it's not a policy issue, you know, I think, you know, my experience has been they've always done everything they can to make it work for people. So I appreciate the new uniforms.
Are we getting new uniforms? No, no new uniforms. So I attended the budget hearing on Saturday, and I spoke a lot about what I had seen and heard in D C about Title I and I D E A and the other priorities and conversations we were having with the elected officials. There's a lot of things in flux in D C. No one really knows, you know, what they can and cannot say, except for the items that are already appropriated. At best, my conversation, last question and conversation with Tim Kennedy's office was, do you have hope? He said, yes, we're hopeful, so.
That's good.
If money ends up being bulleted to the states, I think there is some hope coming out of D C. I don't know when that'll happen. No one really knows if that'll happen at all. So I had a P T A meeting last night. Again, I told you about the conversation with this bus situation. Most of them were kind of worried about it. They, working with, the P T A, working with the P L T.
B L T. B L T.
Building Leadership.
Leadership.
The leadership team are trying to find.
That's McDonald's.
Actually, that came up. Trying to raise some funds for the 2,000 or the 500 T-shirts they have for being a leader in me.
The lighthouse school.
Leadership school or lighthouse school. And so they're stretched a little bit. And one of the suggestions was to do one of these McTeacher nights, but you can do it apparently with many different restaurants to raise a little bit of money. So I asked Mr. Perry, not Barry, Perry. I said, don't you get a little stipend for winning this? And he says, oh, no, things are frozen. Dan Feldman freezes everything.
Budget. Well, listen, it's not me.
Listen, I could go to Dan and ask him, got a few bucks later. No, he understood.
Yeah.
Again, they're a good crew there, very, very much involved in their children's lives and what's going on. And asked me to say something about the buses, so I did. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
So I'm supposed to be at Glendale P T A tonight, but I'm here instead. So sorry, Glendale, we double booked. I have the advisory committee meeting for district-wide counseling team coming up in a couple of weeks. I just want to say congratulations to all of the frozen participants and everyone who supported those kids through the musical. I had a parent reach out to me and say that she felt very proud to be a Panther after watching that. And the feedback was generally that people could not believe that this was a school-produced event or musical. They were absolutely in shock at how amazing it was with all the kids that participated. So that's it. That's all I got.
Let's see, like everybody said, we talked about the music fest. I attended that. We had an athletic council meeting last week. We, we did talk mostly about the Capitol project and what it means for our athletic facilities and talking about, talk about the submissions for the new Panther and talking, talked also about how we can increase Sweet Homes participation in assisting youth programming in different sports. I attended the N H S induction. We had a baseball meet raffle, which was very successful last Friday. Just a couple upcoming things before our next meeting. On Thursday, I will be attending a disconnected forum about cell phone use from high school, or for school-aged children and the governor's proposal for eliminating high schools. So I'll be there on Thursday. I'll report back to everybody how that goes. And I will be in Albany for a meeting with our legislators on the 3rd and 4th of March. And then the last thing I have is just a congratulation to all of our scholar athletes that were dominated, or sorry, chosen last, last week. It was published in the paper, so.
They'll be here next month. We're going to invite them over to a board meeting for recognition.
And didn't Frankie got something for all Western New York student athlete? I saw that on our social media.
He was, he was one of the all-Western New York scholar athletes, so yes. And I believe Carly was also an honorable mention scholar athlete. So, so we were well-represented.
Very well-represented. And I don't have anything for today. I will save any comments I have for next month. Dr. Janestri, you have one more thing to share?
I apologize. I do have an update that I didn't have in the report because we just found out late this afternoon that the New York State Department of Education's Facilities Planning Office has greenlit our building aid formulas and for additions at Glendale, Maplemere, and Glendale, Maplemere, and Heritage Heights. So that means that we will get the maximum amount of aid on those additions to us. And we can move into the next phases of planning with campus, with our financial planner, and with Young &amp; Right. So very excited to hear that news. It happened much quicker than we actually anticipated.
In June, right? Yeah, we, we expected just about a year, and it was done in honestly, five weeks.
Wow.
Yeah, so. So we. Thank you to State Aid.
Yeah, we were super appreciative of that. I did share the news with, they assign a building aid unit number to each of our buildings, and they increased that building aid unit number for all four of our elementary buildings. So I did send it to our financial planner, who helps us kind of really put a price tag to everything. And she said she would review it to see if the, the, kind of the tax-neutral price tag of the project could potentially expand based upon the news that we received today. So we'll have more to report, obviously. But, you know, this, this all stems back to Dr. Janestri and I and our team met with State Aid over the summertime to kind of grease the wheels here. And I think that we've made some significant strides in relationships with that group. And I believe that it helped us get it approved in a much quicker fashion than might otherwise have happened.
Sometimes you hear like horror stories about how long it can take. And I just want to publicly thank the Office of Facilities Planning for working with us, being absolutely attentive and responsive, always asking our questions. And actually, found out today in the email, they helped us uncover a few things that we may not have seen that could have got, get us more aid. So kudos to them and the work they're doing. They are absolutely slammed and overwhelmed, but they really came through for us.
Priority for them. I mean, the fact that they moved in five weeks, that's kind of unheard of for state, you know, kudos to them.
I have a question then, Don. You said they increased that unit for all four elementary schools, right? Does that mean we might be able to do a few more creative things over?
Oh, I will see. I mean, I don't want to speculate yet because we literally just got the numbers at about 4:30 this afternoon. It's a little bit before that because we were on the safety committee thing. But we're going to review it, and we're going to take a look at it, and we're going to see kind of going forward what that means to our scope.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
So what are next steps? You're going to set up a meeting?
Yeah, so we're meeting with the team at, at last week of February. And then we're hoping to get the team back in front of the Building Use Committee in March and then have them, and see where we're at with scope, not only of the project itself, but of the financials. We're hoping to be back in front of the board, March or April, for a presentation on where we are with scope. But I really think our goal was to have it done this year. And we are definitely on track to have the, the scope built from a, what the project will be to what the finances will be for it. So hopefully early this summer, like, like, like our goal. So maybe even sooner.
Can you just expand on the financial person? What's his role at this point, what he or she does, she in this case?
So in a project of this scope, she's helpful from that standpoint. She's really an expert on state aid and building aid. So she helps us to kind of, there are several steps along the way that we have to complete and fulfill based upon how bids kind of roll out and things along those lines with paperwork, once the project gets going. But in this timeframe, she really works well with us to be able to say, okay, you've got this much in terms of debt service coming off your books. This translates to a scope of this range. And then she says, okay, if you use your capital reserve fund, your scope can go to this range, based upon the fact of what we believe comes back in terms of state aid on the building project. Now, the building facilities planning is saying that your aid, the total aidable units on each of your buildings has increased in some instances fairly significantly. So there might be an opportunity for our scope to go from what we believe to be a tax-neutral project of 72 or 74 million dollars. It might creep up a little bit higher based upon that. And she helps us kind of figure that out. So in the end, she really helps us get to a point where, you know, it's been our goal to kind of work all along to be able to provide and present to you and to our public ultimately, if you approve it, a tax-neutral project.
Does it have anything to do with the bonding of the project or?
She does, yes. So once, correct. So once, she'll make a recommendation based upon, she'll help us file the paperwork. Then we get, it's essentially like an R F P. Then we get responses to that based upon, I don't know, let's just say that we are bonding a $75 million project, and we put out bonds for 75 million. She works with us to do kind of an R F P. We get those results, and then she, she gives us those results and compares it to what the state offers through the Dormitory Authority and makes a recommendation to us to say, this is, you know, if you choose this bank or the Dormitory Authority, this is what your debt service will look like.
But she is hired by the district.
Correct.
Okay, it's not like a, she makes any money selling the bonds.
No, not at all. That would be a conflict of interest.
Thank you.
Sure. That's it.
All right, that brings us back to our second open session. Would anyone like to adjust the board? You have three minutes. All right, moving on. We have a motion and a second on personnel item one. We will vote on personnel, oh, no, not.
A and B.
Yes, A and B. And then two, A and B as well. We will vote on one C separately.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Okay, and may have a motion and a second for personnel items one C.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining?
Aye.
All right, that carries. May have a motion and a second to adjourn to executive session to discuss matters related to contract negotiations. We will not be returning.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.